I'd like to call this meeting to order or this work session to order at 5:33. Roll call?
Alex Cantu present.
Mary Hernandez present.
Espiochoa present.
Nereida Cantu present.
Alda Benavides present. Dr. Science, I do declare a quorum.
Thank you, Dr. Benavides. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Science. We'll move on to item number four, public comments.
We have a public comment from Brenda Le Salinas.
Good afternoon, and Madam President, I will request any additional time?
Do you mind?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam President, members of the Board, Dr. Science, administrators, and members of the community. To retain and recruit, a good pay raise should be considered to show respect to all educators and public school employees. Now, Dr. Benavides, Madam President, on May the 13th, at the budget work session number four, you expressed the importance of La Jolla ISD being the top paying district, stating that maybe 54,000 or even 55,000 would be a reasonable salary for first-year teachers. And if we recall, we were the number-one top-paying district in our region. If we want to compete with other districts, we need to do better. Districts throughout the state of Texas have shown they care by providing a better living wage for their employees and for our district can do the same. Our district can do the same. So let's provide a better living wage for all school employees. Our school board has that authority to adjust salaries to the cost of living and make it a top priority to compensate teachers and employees for all the hard work that they do for students and district. Now, if La Jolla ISD is a place to be, then a good raise should be considered because a 2.5% increase is not competitive. The 2021-22 school year 5% pay raise increase La Jolla AFT recommended to the Board was not considered. We were informed by a Board member that resigned in January that 5% would be a school funding issue. Nevertheless, the school board approved a 2% raise for all employees, made us the number-five top-paying district in our region. The starting beginning salary, $52,150. That's right, the number five, according to our region salary scale for first-year teachers. We applaud Ms. Hernandez for advocating for the hourly employees. Yes, something's got to give. When you dissect the school deficit by studying excessive expenditures, excuse me, excessive expenditures that are not a top priority, this is something, you know, that I know that you all have been doing and talking about. So we want to thank you for that. We applaud, we also want you to know that our members are overwhelmed and overworked, that these working conditions have caused major health issues. Not all, but several campuses and central office ministers turn a blind eye to see, a blind eye to these issues. Employees are looking for a healthier work environment where they will be appreciated and respected. Now, based on a survey, 66% of Texas AFT members say that they're considering to leave education, and it's very clear that change for a better future is vital. This crisis should not be ignored, and Madam President and members of the Board, the ball is in your court. Now, there's two questions posed to you by our members and others. With the cost of living increase, inflation jumped to 8.5 in March, the salary proposal that you are going to hear and discuss tonight, you need to ask yourself. This is the first question. Do you consider this a livable salary for educators that have a long commute, spend out out-of-pocket on school supplies, PPE, and related supplies, childcare services, healthcare expenses, lunch expenses, social dues, fundraisers, school donations? And I can continue, but I think I made my point here. So let's take care of our educators and school employees that are the core of our students' future. The second question, why should our school employees be punished for the wrongdoing of leaders that unfortunately did not abide by the oath of office of the position elected? Madam President, members of the Board, have a great evening and thank you.
We have another public comment from Joe Casmerak.
All right. Thank you, guys. Good afternoon, School Board trustees, Dr. Science, and the rest of the La Jolla ISD administration that's here today. My name is Coach Kaz, and I've been working for the district for 15 years. I currently teach social studies at the Academy of Health Sciences Professions in STEM, and I coach boys' basketball at La Jolla High School. I'm also a proud member of the La Jolla AFT Executive Board, and I'm here today to talk with you guys about an issue that's negatively impacting our teachers and our students alike. Currently, our stipend plan has teachers who have a master's degree in their subject area being paid different stipends depending on the campus that they work at. Teachers who work in pre-K through 8 and have a master's degree in their subject area earn $1,000 annually for their advanced degree. Teachers who work in grades 9 through 12 at our specialty schools like the Academy of Health Sciences, La Jolla Early College, Thelma Salinas, we also earn $1,000 per year. However, teachers who teach grades 9 through 12 and work at a comprehensive high school earn $4,000 per year for that advanced degree. Now, as I researched this issue, I've heard a couple reasons as to why that is. First, while the comprehensive high schools are low-performing, they're harder to staff, we need to pay those teachers more. Another thing I've heard is, well, when the specialty schools opened, we didn't want to lose all the master's degree teachers to those specialty schools. Okay? I'm not here to debate the validity of those two reasons, but what's happening is we're having the opposite effect, right? If you look at La Jolla Early College, they've had an unfilled history spot with needing a teacher with a master's degree since July of last year. So what's happening is those students at La Jolla Early College, they walk across the street to our campus for their dual enrollment courses. Now, I understand that's not a long walk from La Jolla Early College to the Academy of Health Sciences, but that's time that could be spent in class. It's also time that they're stent walking to and from, and, I mean, you guys know the kinds of things that the people that we deal with at the regular high schools. So now is the time to do something about this. I propose that we increase the master's degree stipend for teachers who have it in their subject area to $4,000 across the board regardless of what campus they work at. If you think about it, IDEA is aggressively moving into our district. They're taking our students, they're taking our teachers. And as a parent who's considering La Jolla ISD or IDEA, things like an opportunity for smaller class sizes, specialty schools that offer associate's degree, dual enrollment, advanced placement, and, like I said, smaller class sizes and less discipline problems, that's attractive to a parent who's thinking IDEA or La Jolla. So I propose that we need to go ahead and make sure that our specialty schools are staffed with the highest-quality teachers available. Again, think about it. We can have, hey, our specialty schools, these are master's degree teachers. That's a great point to help us bring these kids back. My school is full of kids who used to go to IDEA and whose parents said, you know what? I can get it here at La Jolla ISD. But we need to do our part to make sure that we're paying our teachers and encouraging people to earn that master's degree, to go after that education, and ultimately it affects our students, right? You got a master's degree, you're a better teacher, your knowledge, your expertise translates to the kids, and hopefully it'll help us beat the charter schools. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you both. Our next item on the agenda is job order contracts method.
Good evening, Dr. Benavides, our School Board of Trustees, Dr. Science, administration, and all members present this evening. We're very glad this afternoon to have with us Ms. Michelle Miki Morris from the Rogers Morris and Grover Law Firm. Ms. Morris joins us from her office, well, she's here. Her offices are in Houston and Austin. And Ms. Morris has 23 years of procurement experience, including construction. She has been a TASBO presenter for many years, and she is a very close contact with us through our Region One Education Service Center. She's often brought in to conduct procurement and construction sessions for us through Region One. So when our Board of Trustees, in our recent work section, asked us to bring in someone to present on the job order contracts, we immediately thought of inviting Ms. Morris over. So we're very glad that she was able to arrange to be with us this evening. And so without further ado, we present to you Ms. Michelle Miki Morris on the job order contract.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Science, Madam President, trustees, administrators. Happy to be here. I appreciate the administration inviting me to do this. This is a presentation I've made a number of times, both at the Board level and in very, very granular detail with departments. Let me get to my presenter view here. So when I work with school districts on all sorts of business facilities issues, but mainly in the areas of procurement and construction, managing construction projects, audits, investigations, both state level, federal level, criminal level, I've been through it all with a lot of districts, large and small, throughout the state over my 23 years. And one thing I will tell you is that job order contracting is probably one of the most complex forms of procurement out there. It's a very important type of procurement, and we're going to talk about that, but it's one that gets, for lack of a better word, gets a bad rap because it's not easy to follow all the moving parts and pieces. It works very differently than in other types of construction contracts. And one of the things that makes job order contracting so complicated is that, let me use my clicker here, is that it's, it works like other master contracts that you might have in the school district. You have a lot of service providers that you keep in pools, that you call upon as needed for services. You do it with professional development, you do it with student special education services. The procurement of job order contracts is similar to that, but is really treated as a construction project method, unlike any of the other methods. But because it runs under a master contract, kind of as-needed form, it has a lot more compliance rules, and we're going to talk about that. Job order contracting falls under the procurement statutes for your other public works, construction contracts. What does public works mean? Construction by a governmental entity. So when you see the statutes and rules for public works, that just means construction by a public entity. So in any school district of any size, you all have a massive physical plant. You have lots of buildings, lots of systems, lots of equipment that constantly need attention, whether it's preventative maintenance, routine scheduled maintenance, repairs, replacements, upgrades. And the legislature recognizes that these types of projects or tasks or incidents pop up, sometimes unexpectedly, sometimes it's a known deferred maintenance project, sometimes it's a potpourri of small things that you're going to address in a bond program and package together and use job order contracting, and that's also very common. Where it gets a little tricky is that you have a category of services that are called maintenance services, and you have a category of services that are construction services as it relates to your minor activities involving your physical plant. Pure maintenance services, those are pretty easy in terms of procurement. They work like your professional development providers, like your special education providers. They're, they're easy to procure, it's an RFP, people just give you very vague time and materials, pricing. But when the work involves construction services, a whole set of different rules come into play. And we're going to talk about what does that mean, construction services? How do I know the difference between construction services and maintenance services? Well, they're two different bodies of procurement, but what a Texas Attorney General has indicated, and I am on slide four, I believe you all have a printout of this, so page four, well, it might be five if you don't have the, there we go. Is what's on the screen your page four, slide four? Okay. So the Texas Attorney General has considered this question. How do I know when I have to use a job order contractor as opposed to any other local annual maintenance bid vendor? And the reason the Attorney General has considered this question is because when you're in the world of public works, prevailing wage laws apply, they don't apply to maintenance services. Payment and performance bond requirements apply, which don't apply to maintenance services. OSHA rules for construction sites apply, which are different from OSHA rules for maintenance projects. So the Attorney General has looked at various types of projects to determine, is this construction or is this maintenance? So when I train districts to know, okay, which body of procurement law am I looking at, which way does the contract have to be priced and procured, what other requirements come into play, I tell them to see if it meets the test for maintenance first, and if it doesn't, it needs to be treated as construction. So maintenance is ordinary upkeep, something you do to keep something from failure or decline. It can be preventative, it can be scheduled, it can be unanticipated, a fuse going out, a part failing that needs to be replaced. And what's confusing is that you'll have replacements and repairs that are maintenance, you're trying to preserve something and keep it in working function, and then you can zoom out and be on a much more complex, larger scale, and all of a sudden, a replacement of a roof, for example, or a chiller, and you're in the world of construction. And, you know, the story I tell in training is, you know, about the rancher and the fence. The rancher has a rotted fence post, and he's got to replace a fence post. He's maintaining his fence. He has two or three or five rotted fence posts, he's maintaining his fence. At what point, how many posts does he have to replace? How many linear feet of wire does he have to replace before he's no longer maintaining his fence? He's replacing his fence, he's constructing a new fence. It's a gray area, and it's a difficult area for facilities departments and procurement departments to navigate. So I offer up a three-part test. The first factor is, does this involve a like-for-like replacement? If you're replacing something that's worn out, past its age, failed, is it a like-for-like replacement? But you don't stop there. You then have to look at the scale and the complexity of the project. So you may be taking off an old roof at the elementary school and putting the exact same roof system on it, that's a very complex project. It's not going to be considered maintenance, we know that because there is an AG opinion on that. But the amount of time and materials is also relevant. And then you also look at the physical size of the object being worked on, obviously, if you're replacing a building, that is never going to be maintenance. But there's a lot of things that fall in the gray areas, upgrades, you know, electrical, the addition of electrical wiring or outlets. And so when you're looking at like-for-like, and I say this to kind of frame for you the number of projects that you might have, that even though it runs through your maintenance department or runs through your maintenance budget, are actually construction services that if you don't have job order contractors available, would have to be otherwise treated as a standalone bid project. So job order contracting can cover planned facilities projects, and they can cover a lot of things that really come out of your maintenance project, the addition of a sidewalk, the siding of a portable, that's something that's not been there before. You have to run electricity, you might have to account for plumbing and sewer if it has a restroom in it. So we're looking at a large variety of projects that come up on a day-to-day basis, and they may even come through your school work order system, but they're going to end up meeting the definition of a construction project that has to be addressed somehow by some contractor. So our definition for construction, just to recap, is not just limited to construction of a new building, on page seven. It can be traditional construction, and it could be contracts for repair of a building or repair of something associated with the building, a parking lot, a athletic facility. So let's assume you have a collection of projects in a given fiscal year that you know fall within the definition of construction services. How do you handle those? Well, under the construction procurement statutes, and this is chapter 2269 of the Texas Government Code, you only have so many options. So if you look at slide eight, these are all of the various ways the legislature allows you to address construction services projects. The last two really are not relevant here, construction manager at risk, I guess you could have a minor facilities project that way, but a construction manager agent is a program manager or project manager. It's covered under the construction statutes, but they don't actually build anything, they manage construction. But if you look at the first option there, job order contracting, this is the only one of the procurement methods allowed for construction services that enables you to conduct a procurement and create a pool of vendors before you have any project in mind or designed or scoped out, right? It's the only method that for as-needed, pop-up, last-minute, or planned construction projects that you can procure ahead of time, and you're only looking at qualifications and some approach to how to price the work, and we'll talk about that. If you're not going to use job order contracting, then your options are limited to anything else on this list. Competitive bidding, competitive seal proposal are the most common lump-sum delivery methods. Construction manager at risk, I would never recommend for a minor facilities project. But let's assume you wanted to use competitive bidding or competitive seal proposal. Can you do that for minor projects? Absolutely, you certainly can. And every once in a while, you might run into a project that, you know, seems minor in the course of school district lifecycle, replacing a chiller, you know, replacing portion of a roof, replacing turf on a football stadium. You could put that out as a standalone project, you could use job order contracting. But if you're not going to use job order contracting, the statutes require, and we're just using competitive sealed proposal, for example, on slide nine, you have to have a defined scope. So you first have to get an architect or engineer to prepare plans and specifications before you can even advertise. You have to include those plans and specifications in completed form in a solicitation with the weighted selection criteria, the budget, your timeline, all of the information that you would typically include in a CSP or competitive bidding solicitation. You have to advertise the project for two consecutive weeks. And after scoring and ranking, and this is one of the benefits of CSP over competitive bidding, you can negotiate. You don't have to award the project exactly as it was advertised and designed. You can negotiate some changes in scope or the deadline or the timelines, but only with your number-one ranked contractor. You have a little more flexibility when you're talking about job order contracting, and we'll talk about that in a second, but you can negotiate the terms of a final contract and even work with some value engineering or revisions to the project specifications, but only with the number-one contractor. And negotiations fail, you can move on to number two and so on and so forth. Please feel free to stop me along the way. If I get to a topic where you have a question, we can be very interactive, you don't have to save them until the end. So, you know, I say this to point out that this is not what I would recommend for clients to use for the small recurring type of repetitive facilities projects. There might be some larger ones that you could do either way, but, you know, if you imagine, you know, every time there's an electrical problem and you've got to address something, doing a competitive seal proposal is not ideal. So let's talk about job order contracting and how it works, because that kind of gap is what led to job order contracting. This is a concept borrowed from the federal government. The Department of Defense uses this and has used it for decades. They call it IDIQ, indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity contracts. And so most states have borrowed from that federal IDIQ model to create a methodology to allow governmental entities to have a pool of vendors on-call, but only for certain types of contracts. It's not allowed for everything. You know, my office, the term is jockable. Is it jockable? Is it jockable to renovate a middle school for $8.5 million? No, we have one court opinion on that. But below that, what is the dollar limit in Texas? There isn't one. Neighboring states have dollar limits, but you just, we know it's somewhere under $8.5 million, where that test, well, I'm not suggesting you do 8 million, I'm just saying the one reported case we have was an $8.5 million one out of Galveston many years ago. I tell my clients that, you know, with inflation as time goes on, when I was a baby lawyer, you know, we didn't, we got nervous if anything was over a million. I think now the tolerance is, if it starts with a three, you're okay, anything more than that, you know? But again, you have to look at the project. It could be a $3 million project because it's very equipment-heavy, has HVAC equipment on it, and it's not really a complex project, it just has a lot of very expensive equipment. And then you have some that are $7,500, $10,000. But the definition under the statutes for job order contracting is a procurement method used for maintenance, if I want to be clear. You can use a job order contractor for those maintenance projects, but you can't use a maintenance-only contractor if it's construction services. So somebody that you procure just to be an annual standby bid vendor, like an electrician or somebody, you can use a jock for maintenance projects, you cannot use somebody who wasn't procured as a job order contractor for a construction services project. So it's for maintenance, repair, alteration, renovation, remediation, or minor construction, that's, we don't really have a good definition of what is minor, when the work is of a recurring nature, but the delivery times, types, and quantities of work required are indefinite. What does that mean? That doesn't mean you don't know what you're doing when you sign the job order. It means you don't exactly know what you're doing, the scope and timing of what you need at the time you put out the solicitation for job order contractors is indefinite. Nothing's been planned, nothing's been designed yet. It's the only construction method, as I mentioned, that allows the creation of a pool of on-call vendors. And it's the only construction method that allows for the use of a purchasing cooperative. You couldn't go to a purchasing cooperative to get a construction manager at risk, for example. And the only method allowed where the solicitation doesn't have to have any identified project or scope listed. You have a term, and that's set by law, and we'll talk about that. So school districts can procure their own job order contractors, or they can use job order contractors that have been solicited on your behalf through a purchasing cooperative. Procuring your own job order contractors, first, the Board has to give permission to do so. Okay? It's required by statute that prior to using a delivery method, and I looked at your CV local, you all have declared your default as competitive seal proposal. So in order to use any other methodology, you all would have to authorize that prior to advertising. But the solicitation then seeks both qualifications and pricing. The pricing is a very unique feature of job order contracting, and we'll talk about that. You know, a lot of the jock solicitations I do for clients are not just for general construction. construction. And I understand that you all have multiple pools, which is what I recommend. You know, you may have trade-specific projects or tasks that you don't need to run through a general contractor. You don't need to incur the markup if it's only going to be electrical work or plumbing work or asbestos abatement or demolition or paving. So many districts who solicit for job order contractors will have a checklist in the solicitation, are you a general contractor, are you an electrical company, are you a roofing company? And they create different categories so that when you realize the need you have, do you need a general contractor to manage multiple trades? Or can you go straight to a mechanical contractor who works on HVAC equipment without paying an additional markup to a CCI? The pricing for job order contracting is pretty strict in Texas, and it's not as strict in other states, for example. There's a concept called open book or time and materials pricing. And what that means is that you don't exactly know, you don't have a benchmark for knowing what exactly is going to be charged if you do open book or time and materials pricing. It looks more like what you might expect if you were having work done at your home, where the contractor says, well, whatever, here's my labor rates for hourly labor, and then for whatever the materials cost, it'll be my cost plus 10%, plus 15%. So they'll give you a markup for materials and they will give you some labor rates. That can work for maintenance. But if it's construction services and you're doing job order contracting, you have to have a designated unit price book, much like the insurance adjusters use to adjust a loss. The most common one is the RS Means Facilities Cost Data Book. It's updated frequently. And if you've ever flipped through one, not that you don't have better things to do, but if you look at those and you can see them electronically or in old-school book form, they have everything you could possibly need to put into a building. I mean, they've got a unit price for a two-by-four, for a linear foot of conduit, you know, square foot of insulation. They've got labor rates for a job site superintendent, a project manager, a field engineer, equipment rentals. So when a job order contractor that you have selected is pricing a project out for you, they should be able to go in the book and say, okay, this project requires thirty cubic yards of concrete, you know, five cubic yards of sand, so many linear feet of treated lumber. And they itemize it for you, and they can only charge you what is in the unit price book that you designated at the time of procurement. So everybody works off the same unit price book. You designate what it is. You can do it in a published price book, or you can give them your own list for something very limited like abatement or demolition. How do they compete if everybody's working off the same unit price book? They compete based on either a discount from that unit price or a markup. If it's a discount, it's called a coefficient. If it's a markup, it's called a multiplier. So they're going to compete by giving you coefficient or a multiplier that will apply to the total of all of the quantities and units they need for that particular job. There's also a CCI, a city cost index, for every published book. It's a national book. What you'd pay for a linear foot of conduit in McAllen, Texas, would be very different than what you might pay for it in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. Same goes for labor. So they give city cost indexes for the published unit price book. So when a contractor is pricing out a job, they have to add up all the units and quantities, then they apply the city cost index for your location, then they apply their coefficient or multiplier. And you get to dictate, do they get to add anything on for that? For job costs, bonds, insurance, do they get to add on their invoice for that? Or do you tell them they have to account for that in their multiplier or coefficient? And then they don't get to add anything on. So a lot of what I do in helping clients when they're struggling with job order contractors is tell me what your unit price book was, let me see the takeoff, and you can tell. Are they pricing it correctly? They're only allowed to charge what is in the price book and apply those factors, that's it. So it's very easy to verify whether there's anything in there that shouldn't be in there or whether the rates are too high or there are markups there that shouldn't be there. But that is how they compete. So they're going to give you a coefficient or a multiplier to be applied to whatever unit price book or list you designate. And as I said, and I think back time and materials in open book pricing is not allowed. You can pick one or more vendors under the job order contracting statutes, but the limit is five years. You're going to have to re-procur them every five years at a minimum. You can have a two-year base term and up to three annual renewals. One of the very few areas of law where the legislature has dictated how long a contract can be before you have to rebid it. By statute, when you select somebody out of a pool, you have to issue a written job order. It can't just be a unilateral purchase order. A written job order between you and the vendor that you've assigned the task to that has the total that they're going to charge. I always recommend having the takeoff in hand so you know how they got there, the location of the work, the scope. If there is an architect or an engineer involved, what are the plans and specifications? What's the deadline? Are you going to charge liquidated damages? Things like that.
What do you call this form?
I'm sorry? I call it a job order form.
Form?
By law, a board has to approve any job order that exceeds 500. Now, that's what the statute says. Most of the school districts I work with, their CV local policy is already way lower than that. They never, but we do have, I do have one school district that they let the administration approve a job order of any size, but when it gets to that 500,000 mark, they do have to put it on the board agenda. That's a very liberal policy, that's not typical, but there is a statute that acts as a backstop to make sure that there's transparency on larger jock projects because that might be a point at which somebody says, well, could we put this out on the street? It's pretty significant. Could we put this one out on the street that maybe a local vendor might want to bid on as a CSP who's not in our jock pool?
For a district that's strict, what amount have you seen? You said like this one, you know, some, it's just the 500.
Yeah, that's KDIST. They're very, most districts, it's 50,000, matches what the other construction contract limits are. Most of the districts I work with have a 50,000 in their CH local and their CV local. There's some bigger districts that have larger, some smaller, but the most, if I had to map it out, the mean would probably be $50,000. Median. Maybe I need to take remedial math. The one you, mode, the one you see most often, not the average. Payment performance bonds obviously apply on a per-job-order basis. So if you have any one job order that's more than $25,000, there has to be a payment bond to make sure subs get paid and suppliers. $100,000, you have to have a performance bond to protect you from a default or abandonment.
For our district personnel, what do we have? What do we call it?
For your bonding limits?
Yeah, no, I'm saying like for this job order forms, what do we have? What do we call it? Where we specify the job and we specify the scope of the job and the amount of money? What do we, what do we use? What do we have?
Usually they have different methods, but also use or takes that prints out the takeoff that's in front of them. They'll have to price them, they'll need those on one end, pricing and the total, and then you can add the additional multiplier to that. But if you use, some of these parts are used, are practically, they can use.
So we as a district don't have something that we require from all the, this people that we're doing business with? No, I'm not talking about after school board approval. I'm talking about job order contracts that are done for specific jobs that are not coming to the board that are given to different people. That's what I'm talking about.
Mr. Varejao, can you come to the microphone, please?
Yes, so the form that we use that you're talking about, that not necessarily has to go to board approval because maybe it's not over 50,000 or 25,000 or whatever the case may be, we do review because they do need to submit. For us, that is like a quote form, I guess, for us, if you want to see it that way, it's like a quote form, but it's a form that they have to submit in order for us to review the quantities and the unit pricing and to make sure that they do submit that coefficient because, let's say during the process of receiving these jock bids, a vendor specified a coefficient of .9, you know, or a 10% discount, we need to make sure that they do put it there and they don't miss that 10% discount because that's what they submitted. They can submit more discount if they wish, but not less than what they submitted on the bid.
But I'm just saying, as a district, we don't have a uniform form that we use to issue out job order contract jobs that are, let's say right now, under 50,000. For all the job orders that we've done in the district, what do we use?
No, we don't use a specific form. They provide that form to us.
Because that's something that we could probably have, like for us to have a form that's a uniform as a district that indicates exactly what she said, which was the written job order, the location, the scope of the job, the price of the job, the discount or whatever if they're going to give it, or whatever else is necessary. But that way, all our job order contracts are on the same job order form, and that's a uniform system across the district.
Sure.
What I was picking up is that right now, we don't have that.
No.
The form that you're talking about, does it include looking into the RS Means pricing?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it has to include the RS Means price book, yes.
And it does have the coefficient or the multiplier?
Yes.
Does it have the city cost index?
As well.
So basically, the form that we have, maybe we're just not calling it a job order contract.
Yeah, they submit it to us.
But they're submitting it, they're submitting it, and I'm saying the district requesting the information.
But it does have this information in it on the forms.
Yes. Yeah, so like I was saying, like, there's different softwares that they can use. You know, they might be different, but they all look very similar in the way they print out the proposal or their takeoff, right? But we don't issue that to them as far as, I think that's what you mean, Dr. Benavides, is when we request for regular proposals, we tell them, look, we have this project here, we need so-and-so, you know, material, and we send it to them, and they fill it out, and then they send it back to us. For the jock, we do not do that. We go and show them what the project is, we tell them what we need, how much we need, and then they provide that form to us. And we sign off that it's a good price.
So basically, what we're doing here is like, we go and tell them, this is what needs to be fixed, just give us a quota. And then we just look at everybody's pool and determine it from there?
They don't look at everybody's quote. They just look at the quote of the person they spoke to because they're on that job order list.
Right. When it's just one proposal, yeah.
But which is what we brought up, the rotation in the past, right? This is where we've said that that's how the district does it, it's on a rotation basis.
Yes.
Yeah. So what I hear him saying is that they do have a written agreement, it's just vendor-prepared.
Not the district.
It's on, well, the takeoff will always be prepared by the vendor and reviewed by the district. The cover instrument, they may have a signature block at the end of their proposal, agreed to and accepted by, which is something I see. Or you can attach it to a cover sheet that has, you know, kind of the project name, location, deadline, you know, it has a signature cover page, the job order form I'm talking about, but attached as Exhibit A is that quote form.
I think that that would give us a better indication of all our job orders that are out there and just a simple, and then they could attach what you're saying that they do, which includes all the other RS Means and everything else that's required. But as a district, we have a written document of what we want the job to be because there's been a lot of different job orders that have been issued and people talking to just individual vendors and...
So if I look at a district that has, if I, when I set it up from scratch, everybody picked for the pool, signs what's called a master job order agreement. That has all of the terms and conditions you'd see in any normal construction contract, is terms of safety and bonds and insurance and how payments are going to work and all the legalese. That's a master form everybody signs. Congratulations, you're in our pool, sign this master form. Every job order issued incorporates and relates back to that. So you know, even if a job order goes wrong, you have the right to go after your attorney's fees. You have the right to withhold payments on another job to offset damage, you know. So it has a lot of boilerplate in the master, and then individual jobs come out on this one-pager that just is a cover to their takeoff.
That's what I...
And I'm happy to share.
Yeah, that's what I would recommend that we use as a district and have at least some consistency with all those job order contracts. And then they can attach however they want to, like he said, that they have different software, and they can use whichever software is acceptable. But we could keep, I think, better order and better track of all the job order contracts. That's just my opinion.
So one thing I would like to point out, and we're going to talk about this at the end, is there are a number of ways that you can solicit quotes from your jock pool. By law, you don't have to compete them again, they've already competed based on their coefficient. Even though you're not required to, you can ask multiple jocks in a given pool for quotes. You have a particular task or job in mind, and if time permits, you can either go on a rotating basis or you can say, request for quote, I'm sending it to all four of the electricians in our pool, here's what we need done, everybody send me your quote by end of business Friday.
Are we doing that, Mr. Varejao? If we need a job that needs, let's say you have, I'm just going to use your example, electricians, and so do we get quotes from the different ones, the different, the different vendors approved in that job order contract list? Or do we just do one? I think I can answer that, but...
It depends. I guess now, you know, we did update the policy and we did update the amounts, right? But the way we used to do it before is anything under 50 that didn't require board approval, we would just get mainly just one proposal from one vendor.
That's my point.
And then we would rotate those vendors.
So you, yeah, you can get pretty sophisticated in the process if you have a larger project. Usually the smaller ones are the ones typically coming through your work order system where they need to move very quickly. Larger ones, particularly the ones that might need the involvement of an architect or an engineer, you can issue a request for quotes and determine who's going to give you the best deal. If you ask three different job order contractors to quote the exact same job, you're going to get three different numbers. And not because anybody's, you know, being nefarious, they may have different level of supervision that they've accounted for in the job. Some may have more extra materials included for waste, you know. Some may say, I can do it in... do it in two months, and the other one says, I can do it in six weeks. So the other one's got two more weeks of supervision of a job site superintendent. So there are a lot of variables, even though they're all working from the same unit prices, they may come up with different quantities, timelines, staff.
Well, and when you do have a variety, you get a better deal. And so, but if you're just working with one, then, well, that one, whatever he says, that's because he's an approved, we've already approved him, then they're going to get the job. And I think that our whole purpose of learning more about it is to find ways to be, to be as fair as possible and to make sure that we're taking care of our dollars the way we need to take care of them, and that we are getting the best price.
Absolutely. And how you run that internally is going to be a balancing act between efficiency, you know, you may not have time to shop, or it may be that if you're getting one quote, it doesn't mean you don't have a subject matter expert who can't review and say, really, you know, we need a project manager and a job site superintendent and an assistant superintendent on this? I don't think so. You know, you can always review it and go back to them and say, you know, no, you have in here removing the kitchen equipment, leave it in place, you know. So you can always review it and negotiate if you think they're over-scoping or over-staffing the project, and they can always revise the takeoff. You're not stuck with what they tell you. So, you know, they, you can negotiate just like you can in any other project, what would you charge if we needed it sooner or more quickly? Or, wait a minute, you can take a little longer to do that, this, we don't need overtime or weekend labor. So there are a lot of things you can do to make sure that you're getting the best value, even if you get one quote, but where you draw that line, again, is going to come down to balancing speed and efficiency and response time versus the administrative burden of getting multiple quotes. So, and it may differ, you know, it may differ from project to project, so you always want to have a kind of a bypass, if you will, if there truly is an emergency. The role of design professionals. If you're using a cooperative, you know, obviously, you have to get your own design professional, but the legislature contemplated that even for these quick job order contract projects, you might need an architect or an engineer if one is required by law. If you're replacing a chiller, you're going to need an MEP involved. If you're doing a minor construction project, like siding a portable, you're going to need an architect involved. There are TDLR and ADA requirements where you're going to have to have somebody designing ramps and canopies and other ADA accessible issues. You may need a structural engineer involved if you're putting up a play cover, canopy, or a press box, or even a prefab, scoreboards, big area, light poles, you need engineering, wind load. So there are jock projects that, you know, as efficient and as quickly as you need them done, you might still need a design professional involved. And that's just a copy of the statute. One other rule that came out, oh, probably maybe in the 2011 legislature, I remember when it came out, and I thought it was a good idea. If you are entering into a job order contract with a cooperative, although I think this is a good practice, even if you have your own job order contractors, they can move so quickly and be so convenient that sometimes you have to stop and say, wait a minute, do I need an engineer involved in this? And this law came out of a situation where I think people were spectators at a high school varsity football game, and some light poles literally started falling down in the middle of the game. You know, jocks are convenient, but sometimes you have to stop, and somebody who says, oh, I can do this turnkey, they're not architects, they're not engineers. So, and if there's ever a concern about that, you know, I train facilities departments that if it can collapse, smoke, spark, leak, explode, you know, if it goes terribly wrong, is it a life safety issue? You may want to have one of your architects or engineers just take a look at the submittal of what the contractor's proposing to do and say, hey, do we need more robust specifications here? Can somebody overlook the job plan? And make sure that, you know, we're putting in some overhead projectors or cameras, and we think we have the electrical load, but we all know that it happens sometimes that a teacher turns a projector on and the power goes out in the whole wing of the building. So it's important to kind of pause and make sure that you've got all the right players involved. One thing I will point out is that you cannot use job order contracting for a purely civil works project. This has nothing to do with school districts. This was a provision that was part of the lobby for municipal contractors. They don't, you don't see cities use a lot of job order contractors because they can't use them for civil projects. The legislature does not want cities closing their competition to a closed loop of vendors. So if you have a project for a highway, road, street, bridge, water tank, sanitary sewer plant, water plant, detention, drainage, you can't use a job order contractor for that. Those you actually have to put out, they, those are projects that also need engineering almost invariably, so those all have to be put out independently as standalone projects. It's just a little interesting piece of information. Kind of in a nutshell, my thoughts for, you know, how to implement best practices for a jock program is that you do have multiple pools available to you, and that all the work is not going to one, two companies, and particularly having options in trade-specific categories to cut out the middleman when one is just not necessary and there's not multiple trades involved. One, it saves money in having trade-specific options, and two, especially if they know that you have the option of soliciting multiple quotes, you know, keeps their pencils sharper when they're giving you those quotes, if they know that you have other options to go and get quotes from competitors. I think it's critical when you're using job order contracting to make sure that when you get those takeoffs and you're approving a job that somebody is looking to see, did they over-scope this? Have they over-staffed this? Do they have duplicative items in there? Do you have items in there that you didn't ask for, you don't think you need? You know, at the end of the project, did they have something in there that they didn't use? I actually had an issue with a tiling, like a district-wide tile replacement project, and they had charged, it was only $11,000 for tile spacers, but they never used tile spacers. They were so good, they just, you know, eyeballed it. So we went back to them afterwards, you know, I was helping them with an audit, and you're not charging us for tile spacers, you didn't use tile spacers. You said in the front end you were going to use them, but you didn't use them. So, you know, take a look and see, are they over-scoping? Are they, what they have for equipment rental, that's a common area where I see overcharging is, you know, do they really need to have this piece of equipment sitting out there for five weeks that really is only going to be used for three days? You know, and that just requires somebody going through the takeoff and looking at not just the bottom line, oh, we can afford this, this looks good, let's go forward. How did they get there? You know, what are the quantities? What did they include? Did they properly apply the CCI? Did they properly apply their markup? And are they adding on for things like overhead and profit when it's already supposed to be built into their coefficient? General conditions already supposed to be built into their coefficient? And these are things that you tell them in the solicitation. When you come up with your coefficient or multiplier, it must include all of your overhead and profit, your general conditions, your staff labor burden. The only thing you may allow them to charge extra for is payment and performance bonds because it's only needed on certain projects, right? Or insurance. But no, if they are adding things on to there, were they allowed under the terms of the solicitation to add that, or was that supposed to be baked into their coefficient?
Mr. Villarreal, right now, who reviews to see if they over-scoped a project? Who reviews those?
The administrators, directors, and assistant directors in our department.
And those administrators are?
Mario Flores, Luigi Mendoza, and Roger Hernandez. We're supposed to review, so the supervisors get the quotes, and we need to, I guess, sign off that, you know, it's a good quote, so we're supposed to be reviewing, making sure, like I said, that they have those coefficients, that everything is there. And we have had some that we sent back and they have to fix it and then send it back. We have had those issues.
Yeah, no, I was just wondering if it was one person or if it was various people that were reviewing those, just the job that was going to get done?
It's between the supervisor and the administrator, both of them.
And I am at a certain dollar level a fan of requiring multiple quotes. I think for a number of reasons, not just because, you know, you get tighter pricing, more efficient takeoffs, accurate takeoffs, but it gives you options. You can see how much an extra week of schedule would cost you if it's a time-sensitive project. Do you really need this done in 14 days? With the understanding that it's going to cost you overtime and weekend pay, can you stretch it out? So seeing those options is a great idea. It also, it also lets your vendors know that you're paying attention to how they price because you're looking at them relative to one another. Again, that's a balancing act with efficiency, but most of the districts that I know, if they're not going on a rotating basis, they reserve the right. You don't have to do it every time, you should always reserve the right to seek multiple Always vet, I'm a huge fan of conflicts of interest. That's probably, you know, the second most common training I do in the area of construction procurement, because things change. You know, when you have job order contractors that are in your pool for five years, do the owners change? All of a sudden, I have a district who had a contractor, and kid you not, one of the directors of the contractor was the employee of the school district, you know, and you couldn't figure that out until you look on the Secretary of State website, but they didn't disclose it on their 1295 form. You know, they had added a director, but they didn't disclose it. So are you frequently, you know, on an annual basis, asking them, we want a house build 1295 for them, tell us who the owners of your company are, who are your officers, who are your directors, who are your shareholders? Are you requesting updated CIQ forms? Okay. Do you have a family member with the district, especially in smaller towns? A lot of people are related, and that's okay, it just has to be disclosed. Have you taken any of the guys fishing or golfing lately? You know, you need to disclose that. Have you given any gifts? It always cracks me up when I do the conflicts of interest training, and the athletic departments are in the room, and they're like, ah, and they're dressed head to toe in Under Armour, they're probably wearing, you know, $500 worth of swag, and it never occurs to them that, oh, wait, these are gifts. So, you know, it's important to make sure everybody is turning in those forms, and it's often overlooked with job order contracting because it's provided at the beginning, at the initial solicitation. I think it needs to be updated every 12 months when you're renewing to make sure that there aren't any conflicts. And again, it doesn't stop the transaction, but it may let you all know that somebody needs to recuse himself or herself from a vote, or that perhaps, you know, somebody at the administration shouldn't be in charge of reviewing that particular job order contractor's takeoffs. You know, they have a family member who works for them, you know, sunlight is the best disinfectant. So I think you should have a robust policy for reviewing those issues on a regular basis.
And that's the reason why, Mr. Villarreal, I had asked you, whenever we have engineers and contractors, that you give us the names, because owners change and people move from one company to another, contractors move, subcontractors move, and so sometimes we don't know who we're dealing with. And I do recommend that we require quotes, and I don't want to mislead anyone, I'm not talking about an emergency, that things happen and it needs to be fixed tonight because the kids are coming tomorrow. I'm not talking about those. I'm talking about those jobs that are, the paintings and the fixing of this and the fixing of that, and decals and things, you know, that we do, that they can wait, and we can get different quotes to make sure that we're getting the best value for our money.
Sure. And let's talk about the real life, the real world situation of emergencies, because, you know, we have to, we have to have some flexibility to understand that you might have to call a job order contractor at 10 o'clock at night because a chiller is out, and you don't want...
And I'm not referring to that.
Yeah, and so in that situation, you know, in the real world, you don't say, stop, you got to wait till tomorrow, we need someone to review your takeoff, we need a form, we need a, you know, sometimes you just need to get it done, but remember that you hold the cards in what you pay them. They can only charge you based on the unit price book with a properly priced takeoff, that they, they may not be able to create the takeoff until they get into the situation and see what's required to repair it or replace it. They may be telling you the scope, all you know is you have a chiller not working, or you have water coming through a light fixture in the ceiling. They will then tell you, okay, here's what's going on, here's what I needed to do to fix it to mitigate any further property damage, and here's what I need to do to replace it or repair it, and then you can look and see, is that acceptable? Do I need to, do I need to consult with somebody else and get a second opinion if I think I'm being overcharged, or do I need to get an engineer out here? But you have to deal with emergencies, but remember, you're a governmental entity, you don't have liability unless you have a written signed job order, signed by both parties. And until you have that in place at pricing that is fair and accurate and correct, you can't be sued for non-payment.
Well, actually, this is for Mr. Villarreal. On the benches that we're fixing or that we removed, was that done through a job order or the bleachers, I'm sorry?
The bleachers, yes, that was done through the jock.
So this is where I'm a little confused because why was it done through a job order when it was something that was not an emergency? I mean, yes, we needed to remove it, but why did we just go into a vendor and just pick that vendor? That's the way we did it, didn't we?
Yeah, yeah, we went through the jock bids, I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, no, that we went to the list and we got someone from the list, and we asked, we gave them a job order contract, and we asked them to remove the bleachers. And she's saying if it wasn't an emergency or a rush, why didn't we go through, you know?
Like CSP, you mean?
Or getting a quote to make sure that we got the...
We did think about it, but actually, not that it was an emergency, but in order for us to get those bleachers out of there before baseball season started, we needed to go through the jock, because if we would have gone through CSP, those bleachers, we wouldn't have been able to play baseball there, honestly.
But you don't need a CSP, you could just get a quote.
I don't think we could have...
Right? We could get quotes?
It was like 80,000, I think?
Yeah. Because it did come to the board because it was more than 50.
It came to the board.
But I think it was just the fact that there was a time constraint on it, that we needed to remove them before baseball season because we had a staff that requested that they wanted to use that field, they don't want to play in a different field, and so we had to remove the bleachers and put the temporary bleachers in time for baseball season.
Let me ask this, maybe we could have treated it different through two projects, no? Maybe one to remove them and then one to go after bids to replace the bleachers? It could have been done that way too, right?
Which is, that's what we're doing, so, yeah.
But to remove them, we could have gotten quotes to remove them and made sure that we got the best possible price. We didn't need to go to a CSP, we could have just done quotes, and then even with time, you know, I mean, the three of us are vendors on the job order contract, and you ask... us are vendors on the JOC order contract and you ask him what the scope of the job and he gives you a price and she gives you a price and I give you a price. And then based on that, whoever gave you the best price, that's the one that got it.
Which, which would've been the soliciting, the multiple quotes from different vendors in the job order contract.
In the job order contract, yes.
I think that's what you're...
That's what we're saying, yes. That why was it done like that? That why couldn't we have gotten quotes? But you answered that, that before we were just going to one, we weren't getting quotes. And that's why I'm saying that a recommendation would be to get, to open it up and that way they also see the vendors see that they really have to be really good about the pricing that they give us and that we're looking at it so that that way there's more competition and...
And so now that, now that we changed it to, I think it was 10,000, anything over 10,000, we're gonna get a second quote. We have seen a difference, well, not a difference, but at least now they're saying, "Oh, so it's not just me? No, it's not just you. We're getting somebody else too." So that in itself promotes more competition.
Of course, of course. And then more quality of work and better performance and all that. And so that's gonna improve that. And that's our whole idea for reviewing the process of job order contracts and how can we make it better for our district?
Yes.
So, and Ms. Morris, any suggest, any other thing that you can think of that you've seen in other districts? Because that's really what our goal is. Our goal is to improve our procedures, our procurement procedures, all the way around.
Sure. And one, one thing I do tell districts is that if JOC is an option, job order contracting is an option, stick with job order contracting if there's not an architect or an engineer involved, right? It's very difficult to do a standalone CSP where you're having to make up the scope yourself, right? So if there's an architect or an engineer involved, that's when you'd see it standalone. But JOC is not just for emergencies. There, there are districts who, you know...
No, we've used it for a lot of things.
Yeah, for bond projects, for, you know, anticipated things. But again, in terms, I will, I will say this, there is a dollar threshold at which you don't even see the job order form. You see just a countersigned quote. They move that quickly, right? "I need a, I need an additional electrical outlet in such and such classroom." $780, you know, or whatever. And you don't even mess with the job order form. That's where you kinda have to balance bureaucracy with efficiency. So you can create limits as to, you know, at what dollar amount do you have to use a job order form versus just a quote or purchase order? At what level does it go to the board? At what level do you have two people review the takeoff? At what level do you have multiple quotes? So you see internal procedures that address these things, you know, how many people, is there oversight on the approval? How many people have to check the box that they looked at the pricing?
That's why I was asking, who are the ones approving? Because each of them, I'm sure, have their expertise. And, you know, if it's approving for their area or is it approving based on their expertise? Or how are they assigned those approvals? Or is it just, "Well, this is my area, this is my assignment and I can just get it approved because I'm the supervisor." That's why I was asking, because different individuals have different areas of expertise. So it's by area, not by expertise? Do you have, I don't know if anyone has any other questions? I don't. It's been very informative and it's helped a lot. It's gonna help us improve. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
I think we're ready to move on to item number six, which is the budget work session number five. And first item is the 2022-2023 revenue and expenditure projections.
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to direct you to tab number one. On tab one, we have the, it's gonna be a summary of revenue and expenditure projections for the 22-22-23 school budget. We turn the page to page one of section one. We have the budget facts and this is what we currently have right now. We have the preliminary property values of $3,322 million in property values. Once again, these are preliminary. The certified values will be provided to us in late July. After that, we will reconvene and come back and give you with the actual certified values that the appraisal district will be providing to us in late July, okay? And that may have, may have an effect on the actual tax rate that may be adopted in late August, okay? The next area, based on the projection that we have right now, we are estimating a tax rate of $1.27 with a maintenance and operations of 97.40, .9746 and a debt service of .2954. In the MNO tax rate, we're including a .0317 disaster pennies and we are using that due to the winter storm Yuri. It was declared, we had it last year, the, there was a disaster declared for our area. So therefore, we as a district wanna go ahead and take advantage of using those 3.17 cents. Those disaster pennies, by us taking advantage of that, will generate additional revenues of about $4.9 million. And out of that, $958,000 in local taxes and $3.9 million in state revenues by adopting the disaster pennies into, into our property tax rate. So therefore, on a $1.27 tax rate and the $3.3 billion property values, we have a total tax levy of about $40,620,000. We are anticipating a 98% collection rate, which gives us a total budgeted tax revenues of $39,800,000, which is broken down into maintenance and operations of $30,500,000 and debt service of $9.2 million, okay? We, when it came to, oh, let me go back and when talking about the disaster pennies, just wanna make this notation there. For the 23-24 school year, we need to start thinking of a possibility of maybe having a TRE to continue taking advantage of these 3.17 cents, okay? We have been using this 3.17 cents because of disasters that have been declared, but this year, there hasn't been a disaster. Hopefully, there's not one. I mean, we don't wanna get affected by a disaster, but if there's not one, that might be a possibility that as a district, we may consider going for a TRE to be able to take advantage of those 3.7 and be able to generate these additional revenues that it generates, okay? Now, I'd like to move on to the student average daily attendance projection, 21,404. On this one, we worked, this estimate, we worked in coordination with the different departments to ensure, especially like the special populations, to ensure, these are our projections, how does that look, what do you anticipate and so forth. And so far, we met and we determined with a projection and that was shared with the board previously. And this is what the projection that we estimated for as a average daily attendance for next year, okay? The next item, it's salary increases and retention stipend. Of course, as of right now, we do not have a salary increase projected into our budget calculation here, but we do have, and what the board approved previously was 2,500 in a retention stipend to all eligible employees at a previous board meeting, okay? And I believe HR may be touching a little bit more in that. Just wanna know that in our budget, we are incorporating debt payments of $5.2 million for capital leases in the general fund and $21 million in debt service of bond debt, okay? The next item, we have the health insurance contribution of $6,360 per year per employee. This year, we did, the board previously approved a $63 increase on district contribution, which will generate about, approximately about $3 million for, that will help out the health insurance fund.
Is that increase included in this number?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Our workers' compensation rate is at 1%. And within our budget, we've already incorporated some of the special projects. These were shared previously and the special projects totaled about $7 million. And those were discussed, were submitted by the departments, they were evaluated by the cabinet and they were prioritized. And these are the ones that we as a cabinet felt that is something that needed to be addressed, okay? Any questions on this page?
So these are the ones that are, that are going to be included?
Yes, ma'am. These are already included in the numbers that we will be sharing on the next page. Couple of pages, they're already included.
Well, you could talk about it, Rick. It's this building here, this wall, well, the wall by HR.
It costs $120,000?
Estimate, yes. Yes, ma'am.
I was wondering with the cost of diesel, the way it's going, and it just reminded me because of transportation, but have you all studied what, what impact it's gonna have and, and the possibility of consolidating more routes and making sure that, that...
Our transportation department is working on consolidating routes for the new school year.
Correct.
So yes, we are, we are looking and we are working on that.
Can we have a report on that?
We can have a note.
Yes, definitely.
To see what the impact of the loss of the students that we lost and how that has changed the routes because it's not as many students, we weren't transporting as many students as we were before. And then the impact of the, the cost of the diesel.
Yes, we're working on it. I'm not sure when it will be, but as soon as we're done with that study or the consolidation of the routes, we'll definitely bring for you to, to review.
Any other questions on the special projects?
No, I'd just like, Dr. Seitz, if we could look into, I know that there, I know this coming school year, there, we wanna do more activities with the students and stuff like that, you know, even more incentive, but to make sure or look into that they have the adequate budget to do all these activities that we wanna plan for for the next coming school year on the elementary level.
Yes.
Just to look into it.
And we did, as we're working on the budget, for example, we did build in money for attendance incentives and then also behavior incentives. So we are building that into the budget.
Thank you.
But once again, you know, $7 million are included in the numbers that we will present on the next page. They're already within the budget, okay? On the next page, on page two, it's a summary...
Can I just point out that here under the special projects, for example, we've got an amount $254,000 for student attendance incentives. I don't know if there's another one because I do know that we have some for behavior also.
There's another $67,000, Dr. Seitz, and that was at the central office location that it would be rewarding, I believe, those campuses with the highest attendance and so forth.
Okay.
I do wanna add, Dr. Seitz, that for the behavior, we do give our campuses $12.50 for every single student.
Per student.
Per student.
Because I know, I know we wanna do more activities with the kids next year, just, you know, as long as they have the adequate budget to fill those needs.
Yes.
Especially because we keep hearing about the teachers having to purchase their own materials and I'm thinking with all the ESAR money we got, teachers should not be buying anything out of their pocket. I mean, this should've been great years for teachers and because of the cost of living, you know, that's something that we need to address and we need to help the teachers.
And those additional funds for behavior came from the ESAR funds under social motion.
Any other questions? No? Okay, if we move on to page two, this is a summary of general fund revenues. It's just a comparison as to what we budgeted back in, for the budget for the 21-22, the preliminary actuals and our budgeted plan for this coming school year. The budget plan for school year, of course, is based on the ADA of 21404 and the appropriate tax rate that we discussed in the previous page. And we are anticipating in our general fund, a total of about $283 million projected for next year. Compared to last year's budget, there is, there's a decline of about $14 million. Last year, we budgeted 297. This year, we are budgeting 283. Any, any, any questions on this?
And you're just budgeting less because you know that there's less coming in?
Correct. I mean, of course, we, our funds are, we earn money based on our average daily attendance. So our average daily attendance that we budgeted in 21-22 was $23,033. Our actual ADA was 20,720 and that number is already adjusted by the, what's it called? By the TPAR, which is a targeted percentage attendance rate that was approved by the commissioner back in March.
The commissioner back in March, yes.
So therefore, for next year, we are projecting a decrease in average daily attendance of two, down to 21,404. And the revenues are based on that average daily attendance. On page three, this is a summary of the general fund alone. It's listed by funding source. We have, and it's revenues on the top, and then we have the expenditures. And the expenditures are by object code, meaning payroll costs, contracted services, supplies and materials, other operating costs and down the line. And it's by fund. The first column, of course, we have fund of food service. That fund is balanced out. I mean, they're self-sufficient, they, whatever they earn is what they can spend. So that is balanced out. Then we have state Kate, state comp and state bilingual. Those three funds, as you can see, right now, they need to review, raise their budget, but we haven't reached out to them just yet because we wanna wait and see what, what happens once we calculate the, if there's, the increase on teachers, the ones we adopt of, so we can actually have the actual number that needs to be adjusted. Then if we move on to athletics, special ed, the early education allotment, those, of course, for example, athletics, that number gets funded through the 199 general fund, okay? So we would be supplementing them with 3.7 million dollars. With special ed, based on the entitlement that they get, they get $11.3 million and actually their expenditures are 22 million. So therefore, the general fund will be supplementing them for about $11.5 million approximately.
So all these budgets are over-budgeted?
Correct.
The CTE, state comp, state bilingual, athletics, special ed and early childhood.
Which the, the CTE, the state comp and the bilingual, they will adjust once they have a final cost to figure into the salaries. The one that will not be, that will stay, is the athletic and the special education just because that is the cost. So those two are gonna stay more than likely like that.
That's more than likely, that's, that's gonna happen. So therefore, as a general fund alone, there's a, we are at a negative...
$10 million.
Negative 8.7, 8.7 million dollars. Because if the general fund right now has $9,136, the athletics will take 3.7 of that. Early education allotment will take 2.6 and then we need to still fund $11 million out of the special ed. So that would put the general fund at a deficit of $8.7 million. In addition, I wanna remind you that, and we will see it at the next page, that amount, we had approximately $26 million in salaries from the general fund that were moved over to the ESAR funds, okay? I mean, there is money in the, ESAR money to pay for that, but that's something for us to consider. What will happen once ESAR funds are no longer... What will happen once ESER funds are no longer here? Those costs will come back to the general fund.
To the general fund.
So, overall, if we take that into consideration, we would be at about $35 million if we did not have, if we did not have the ESER monies available.
How can you sleep at night?
And the deficit is...
At a deficit.
And the deficit was because of the ADA?
Part of it, uh, just doing a quick calculation, just let me remind you that last year, we approved a budget that was about $13.5 million deficit, right? That we were using from balance. Let's just keep everything simple.
Yes.
Uh, let's say, we are starting this year. Revenues did not change, let's say they didn't change, and expenditures did not change. We're starting the year with a $13 million negative. We are adding the reduction in revenues of approximately $14 million. If you saw on the previous page. Okay? Then, we're adding the special program, the special projects, $7 million. Okay? Then, we're adding about approximately, maximum almost about $3 million for the increase in the health insurance contribution. And that is definitely needed, uh, in the health insurance. So, that puts us at about $37 million.
In the red.
In the red.
So, definitely, we need to continue to look for ways, whether it's, well, staffing, costs, and other costs, like the health insurance plan, just, everything adds up.
We need...
So, we need to continue to look for ways to reduce, um, to reduce our costs. And we need to continue to look at our staffing, because the staffing is 80, 75 to 80% of our budget.
I mean, just, so, so you're aware, we met as a cabinet, we reviewed other costs aside from salaries. And yes, we could go in and cut here and there, but it's minimal. It's minimal what we can cut.
I think we've already cut enough, I think we've already cut enough what goes into our campuses to support our, our principals, to support our staff.
Yes. And as, as we were reviewing what we could cost, we were mainly looking at, uh, central officer, district-level expenses that would not impact the campuses. We have not, once the bu, the principals got their budgets, we have not gone back. And that has not been part of the conversation as far as cutting expenses. And then, in looking at central office expenses and what else we could cut, we know we cannot cut anything to do with fine arts, athletics, UIL, uh, any other, any other central office expense that affects kids and their activities. We are not touching any of that. We're looking, for example, at central office staffing, uh, other central office contracts that do not have a direct impact on student learning or student activities, extracurricular activities. We are not looking at any of those areas to cut.
Yeah, and let me remind you, that $35 million does not include any raises.
Can you get closer to your mic, cause I'm having a hard time hearing you?
What I'm saying...
That the $35 million does not include any raises.
I know, but I wanna know why, the why.
The why.
Because I can't hear, that's why I want him to get closer.
The why, why the $35 million?
He just walked us through it. Say it again.
The $35 million, why? It's, I mean, unfortunately for my, it's staffing. If you wanna know why and where it is, it's staffing. As we have shared in the past, we've seen the student enrollment going down. Staffing either going up or staying constant. They're not, and if it's going down, it's not going down at the same level or the same rate as the student population going down.
Mr. Trevino, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this has been a problem that has been for years. Because I was in the roundtable, I remember, as a parent, receiving that information, maybe not at the roundtable, but it was discussed there among others. And that was a few years ago, where we were already seeing the decrease and then an increase still in staffing. And I'm sorry to put it out, but it was central, you, you, Dr. Seitz said herself, it was central, it's central office staffing, where...
But as, as a board, I think, I mean, there's only so much we can do to hold off some of these things that have been brought up to us. But ultimately, there's, there has to be some change with the decrease of enrollment. And there has to be some measures, and drastic measures that we need to do. And, you know, it, you know, it's, they're tough decisions, but at the end, we need to make them. And, and I've always said that we need also the community's involvement, you know? La Jolla is the biggest employer in our area, and in order to keep it that way, our kids need to go to La Jolla SD. There's so many opportunities for La Jolla. I mean, we all came here to La Jolla and, and, I mean, it, it, it's, it's a world of opportunities. And we need to take advantage of those and stop sending our kids elsewhere where they can get better quality of care and better education here in La Jolla SD. And it's, it, it just upsets me every now and then because...
And, yeah, speak, I mean, we have, we've talked about some of the drastic measures, right? We've talked about school consolidations. We've talked about employee contributions to health benefits. We even talked at our last meeting about program changes in certain departments where we could cut staffing. So, those are, those options are still out there. I know that we have talked about it, they have not been approved. But those are some measures that we have brought up. And like I said, we will continue to look for others. But those have been three very viable options that we have brought.
Yeah.
I don't know how we can sit here and continue to operate in the red and think that we're okay. We're not being responsible.
We're not okay, that's why.
We're not being responsible at all.
As a cabinet, we, we recommended the school consolidations. We recommended the contribution to the health, uh, plan. We even brought last week a reduction in force or program change, not in all the central office departments, but in some central office departments.
And of course, like Dr. Seitz mentioned, the school consolidations, closing some of our schools. I mean, that is something, if our schools continue to operate with less than 300 students, I mean, we are, we are having to fund a principal, council, librarian, assistant principal, and so forth. So, that is a very, uh, a large cost in a school for 300 kids, where you might have another one with four, and our schools are billed for at least 700 students.
800, at least.
Most of them are 750 to 850 kids.
Well, that's where, that's where I mean the community, we need the community involvement and everybody else around that demographics of school where there's 300 or less kids. You don't want schools to close, and then we all need to put our effort into recruiting kids into our schools. If not, there's not much we can do, or there, there's only so much we can do to hold them off. But eventually, we're gonna have to start doing something about all these issues.
And I, and I know that, and I know, Mr. Cantu, where you're saying that we all have to work together as a team, because I know that our staff have worked long hours and student services and principals trying to find different types of initiatives and incentives. It's, it's just parents' choice, and how is it that we're going to market? You know, just like Coach Kaz said, you know? How are we gonna bring back those students? Or how are we going? Well, hopefully, we'll have some kind of growth, you know, in our district too.
We did have a meeting with our elementary principals, because if you look every meeting when we look at our enrollment, uh, in our, it's our elementary schools, right? I mean, we've lost kids in all, at all levels, but a lot in elementary schools. And so, we did meet with our elementary principals yesterday on marketing their schools. And we gave them some very specific ideas of, uh, making sure that all our kids at the elementary level go home this summer with a calendar of activities for student engagement, because we know that parents want their kids to be academically successful. They want their kids to be safe in school. But they also want their kids to be engaged and have fun in school. And they wanna know, how are my kids going to be rewarded and recognized at school? And so, with those ideas in mind, we're, our elementary principals, and I wanna thank them because they were very positive and very collaborative yesterday. And they are working on a marketing plan month by month for next year so that we can communicate beginning next week or before. And so, so that our parents know, these are the amazing things that are gonna be happening at all our elementary schools, so that if another district does, does go knocking at their door, that the parents already know, these are the things that are gonna happen at La Jolla SD at our elementary schools, and that kids can be excited and parents can be excited about coming back. And so, our principals are working on that marketing plan for their campuses. And that's, and that's one of the reasons, Mr. Cantu, back to your other question, that we do have to provide additional funding for the principals for those kinds of things. Because all of those things take money, and we put those things in the budget.
For kids love stuff like that, and it, and it just, it, it, they need to...
And, and Ms. Cantu, and, and, uh, Mr. Choa, you brought up the point that this is something that has been brought up before and so forth. And to answer your question, how I base myself in staffing, is we did have a, uh, a staffing study done in 2019, and I know we had done one prior to. And on both of them, TASB came in and they told us, you are overstaffed by X number of positions. So, that is where I'm basing myself.
Okay, but, Mr. Trevino, we also had a pandemic that took place in the curve, and there were some dynamics that...
And there was some additional staff that we needed, yes.
And, and let me, let me tell you, you know what? Not that I'm glad the pandemic got here, but because of the pandemic, we, it helped us out. Because there was a lot of costs that were not incurred during the first year of the pandemic. We stopped all the transportation, all the sports, and things like that. And then ESER monies came in. So, that helped us. Otherwise, we would be facing it now.
And Dr. Cantu is right, we've been talking about this at the roundtable and at lots of other meetings about the need to consolidate schools. Precisely four years ago, that was brought up, and that was the reason why. Because all the other districts at that time were talking about it. This would be all said and done, uh, if we had done it at that time. Because, um, there was districts that closed five schools at one time. There was other districts that closed four. And we weren't the only ones. Now, we're the only ones.
Yes.
Cause we've been delaying and delaying and delaying the inevitable. Cause it's going to have to happen eventually. But you are correct, we have been talking about it for a long time. The district has been losing students for a long time. And I could almost say that the district will lose another 1,000 students this year, based on the new grade levels that are gonna be incorporated into IDEA. And then just based on, it's wonderful that student services has all these ideas, but I'll tell you what, parents have already made up their mind. And some parents already decided that their kids are going to IDEA or somewhere else.
Or somewhere else.
The only way to keep schools is to create, I mean, to keep kids is to create great schools and to make sure that we value the parents and that the parents know that we really value them and we pay attention to them when they come to a, a conference and that they feel heard and that they feel that their kids are being taken care of. That's the only way that kids are gonna stay here. With one bad experience with a school, the kids, the parent is gonna withdraw. And especially in elementary, because in elementary, the kids don't get to pick. In middle school and in high school, they get to pick. And that's why we're not seeing it at our high schools. But in our elementary, if the parent says, I didn't like this, I didn't like the way I was treated, my kid's not gonna go here, that's it. Decision has been made and the kids will withdraw. Will be withdrawn, they won't withdraw, because they don't withdraw themselves. But they'll be withdrawn. That's the truth, guys. We can talk about it all we want, but that's the truth. And we're responsible to, um, make tough decisions for this community. And we've gotta help administration, because they've been doing their work and, and we haven't been supporting them. And they need support. Because I know how it feels when you're not supported. And, uh, and there's things that need to be done if we're going to move or continue to move this district forward.
Regarding the TASB study, I think that along with the, the enrollment decline, which I think started like in 2013, 14, somewhere around there.
About 15, yeah.
But even, uh, in the TASB study, if I remember, that was done like in 2008, it already showed, um...
Overstaffed.
Overstaffed. And we really have not done anything about that. And then we haven't done anything about schools either. So, it's kind of been two things and they have finally hit. And we have this explosion of deficit, uh, budget deficit.
And the enrollment decline basically started in 16, 17 school year. We've had the enrollment declines since then.
$35 million is a lot of money.
And, I mean, thank goodness for the ESER, but at the same time, we need to be planning for, we don't wanna fall off a cliff in two years. Because it's only gonna last two years, and then we're gonna need to, by that time, have made drastic changes. And I, I don't even wanna say two years, because we've gotta start making the drastic changes right now. But if we have not made drastic changes in two years, we're not gonna have ESER to fall back on.
Any other questions on page three? If we move on to page four. On page four, the top section on the, on the top where it says subtotal general fund, we already discussed that on the previous page. We also talked about the subtotal on ESER funds, which gives us a $26.9 million, $27 million there. And then the other ones from, uh, that's another governmental funds. Those funds will need to balance themselves. Uh, page four.
Page four.
Page four. I've, I've tapped one.
Okay.
Those funds will have to balance themselves. For example, 211, they're, they're the negative 730, but normally, they go in and cut. I mean, those, those funds depend on their carryover with that additional monies come in to the, to those funds later on during the year.
But also, if we increase, they have to also increase the salaries. And so, that'll eat up some of that money.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, uh, and then we have the proprietary funds. We have the sports and learning complex. We, uh, with, uh, we estimate that $235,000 in revenues and expenditures of $393,000. Of course, our local fund will be supplementing $158. I mean, that one will depend based on the actual expenditures. This is budget. Same thing with the Holly Trillos Golf Course. We're anticipating $544,000 in revenues, $669,000 in expenditures, with a supplement from the general fund of about $125,000. And it was the same thing with the print shop. We anticipate $100,000 in the print shop, $336,000 expenditures, about $236,000 be supplemented by the general fund. That, of course, this is a budget, the, those numbers will fluctuate depending on actual expenditures at year-end. Okay? The next one that I wanted to point out to you is the health insurance fund. The $34,437,000 there, it's already incorporates the 63 additional, uh, increase in premium that was, that is going to be contributed by district, by the district. So, we anticipate at $34 million. Expenditures are about 36. So, the, uh, the health insurance is still at a deficit of $1.7 million. Okay? Then we have the workers' comp, they be self-sufficient, and we have the unemployment. We are not projecting any revenues for that, because they do have a very healthy fund balance, so they should be able to, uh, use their fund balance to pay their, their expenditures for that year.
I just wanna point out again, and I know you said, you talked about it, oil, but even with the increased district contribution to the health insurance fund, we are still projected to be $1.7 million over. So, we need to, that's something that we need to do something about.
We, we brought up an agenda, of course, uh, not the last board meeting, the last board meeting, of course, to have an employee contribution of $20. So, and we were anticipating about a million dollars. That would still leave us at about 700, $700,000, maximum.
We had also asked that maybe you could survey the staff and we could find out if they prefer to make the contribution or we close the clinic.
We have a survey that is prepared, it's ready, but we wanna talk to the principals about it tomorrow first at their principals' meeting, so that they know and they can explain to the teachers. But the staff, the survey's ready. And so, as soon as we give the principals that explanation, then we'll survey and we'll bring the results as soon as we have them.
And whichever route we go, it, it would help us.
It would help us, yes.
At the $1.7 million deficit, also for the health insurance.
Yes.
If we did both, we could have balanced it out.
So, that's something to consider.
That concludes my presentation when it comes to revenue and expenditure projections for this coming year, so.
Were you gonna talk about the early education allotment?
They didn't hear, uh...
They didn't hear, uh.
It's just hard to hear on this side.
Yes, and, and I agree, because sometimes I don't hear either. But I was asking that we had suggested that the board, that the board, that the staff be surveyed to find out if they prefer to pay the $20 or if they prefer to close the clinic, one or the other, and see what the staff feels. And Dr. Science responded that the survey is ready, but that they want to talk to the principals before they send it out. And I apologize for not speaking to the mic.
Good evening, everyone. The next section is the early education allotment staff. At a previous work session, we were, we did get this request to see who gets paid out of the early, um, the early education allotment, and we have it on the next page, on page two of section two. We do pay our Head Start teachers for about $1.1 million in salaries paid out. Our pre-kindergarten teachers, we pay about $2.5 million. Our reading teachers, we pay about $851,000. And our pre-K instructional assistants, we pay about $844,000 for a total of $5.4 million. This is salaries alone. This does not include benefits. I know in Mr. Trevino's previous presentation, he did share that we pay about $6.9 million in the allotment, but this is salaries only.
I would, I would like at the end of the school year, or maybe in August, I'm, I'm just, it's, it's going to take some time to, to get this information, but I would like to know how much we get for ADA for three-year-olds, four-year-olds, and how much we've invested in the pre-K 3 program, including salaries, including materials and all that, and see if, how, if we were profitable at the end of the school year or if we, we lost money at the end of the school year. And out of those kids, how many did the district retain at the end of the year?
Thank you, Mr. Cantu. We'll, we'll work on that, we'll begin working on that.
Does anyone have any questions on section two? If not, we will go over to section three, and we do have our Executive Director for Human Resources, Ms. Gloria Rodriguez, that is going to be projecting this information on the screen for the members of our audience who are here today. I did share the staff allocations at the previous work session for you to review.
I was just thinking, on the previous page, the reading teachers, even though I love reading and I'm an English person, but I know that we had already addressed the reading teachers, and that's like a million dollars in staffing that we added again. So it may be something to look at, especially now that we don't have, especially now that we have had classrooms without certified teachers. It may be that they need to be in the classroom as a certified teacher.
And this year, Dr. Benavides, unfortunately, because we did have so many vacancies, a lot of our teachers who are identified as reading teachers did serve as classroom teachers this year.
Yeah, it may be that we need to just revert to that and make every teacher responsible for teaching reading to their children.
Yes, ma'am. We can go ahead and consider that. Again, in section three, on page two, I would like to point out one change that we have made at the top of the early school, I'm sorry, the elementary schools for assistant principals. Previously, we had, we had allotted half an assistant principal for every elementary if they had less than 300 students. However, we do understand that the number of students may differ, but the responsibilities for those administrators remain the same. A lot of our campuses who did have a shared assistant principal did find difficulty when it came to testing, when it came to different areas. For example, if the principal is at a principals' meeting, well, where does the assistant principal report to? And what happens to that campus that doesn't have an assistant principal? So one of the recommendations that we bring is that we change that back and that every elementary campus have an assistant principal.
Thank you, Ms. Ayala. I, I see the importance of that and how much they've struggled with that because, like you say, the job stays the same. And it must have been really hard for them, those campuses that had, to deal with a half-day or, or have a half-day without one, so that's, I, I like that consideration. Thank you.
It's great, but it's not the time.
And I'm just going to go ahead and go through the different pages that we made changes to point them out to you because, again, this was something that was shared previously. So if you move over to page 18, there were no other changes to any of our campuses. If we move over to page 18 of that section. Because of the new plan that we have for the procurement process, one of, one of the requests was to add additional staff to our finance department. So you will find those individuals, those new positions on line 33, 34, and 36.
What page is that?
Page 18. Page 18, they are highlighted in green, and those are the new positions that were requested.
And we talked about those new positions, of people being moved from current positions into those positions, so they're not really additional FTEs.
Correct. These are going to be internal moves that we're going to make in with existing staff.
Ms. Ayala, but how many teachers do we have that are, that we have not renewed or they're actually, that we're going to be short this, this year? Do you have an idea? Because I know I've seen a lot of retiring teachers.
I do not have a specific number for you right now, Ms. Hernandez, but we do have a lot of individuals who have resigned or retired. If you go on to our website for Human Resources and see the employment page, unfortunately, we do have so many listings. And frankly, I am concerned. We are making every effort that we possibly can to make sure that we not only retain, but we recruit high-quality teachers, but we are experiencing a teacher shortage nationwide, and we are seeing it here in La Jolla YSD.
And that's the reason why I said, I love the idea of the assistant principal, but it's another teacher out of the classroom. And we can't have kids without teachers.
Thank you, Dr. Benavides. If we move over to that same section and if we go over to page 22. Line 66, just to make a note that we are making a title change. Previously, we had a Fine Arts Administrator, that will be now the Director of Fine Arts. If you move to the next page, page 23. Line 77 and 78, we are recommending to convert one of those FTEs by attrition or reassignment to become network technicians and to help out our staff. If you move over to page 28 of that same section. We are also making recommendations to close some positions, I'm sorry, to reduce some positions. For example, the Assistant Director for Transportation, we will reduce from two to one. The Supervisor for Transportation, we will reduce by one from five to four. And then on the next page. On page 29. We do have a request from our CNS department to create field supervisors, so those positions are going to be added. And we are going to be converting our Executive Chef to a Menu Specialist.
What's a field supervisor?
Field supervisor is going to be, well, Mr. Villarreal.
Like a manager.
Like a what?
Like a manager.
What would they do?
Some type of manager, but a field supervisor is going to be pretty much another set of eyes looking at managers at every campus. You know, issues from news, uh, production and, uh.
Would they decide?
And all the, uh, so much.
And would that be funded from their?
Through it.
Yes, ma'am, it's through the CNS funds.
But those are good positions needed, because any help they can get, especially if paperwork is good.
Yeah, I was just asking on that. Well, but with, what's her name, Galina, we didn't have her. We're just adding and adding, guys, and we're, we're talking 35.
But that's funded through the CNS department.
Still.
There is already one FTE that we're going to use, it's not asking for two FTEs, we can use both of them, actually, from the, from the.
So both, I'm sorry about that.
Say that again.
So, so there's two FTEs that we're asking for. One is already there, it's a vacant FTE. The other one, we're going to be using from within the department as well.
So there will be two field supervisors?
Two fields, one for the east and one for the west, correct.
Maybe we can continue to look and see if we can find another one.
Sure.
That would be the best thing.
Unless, unless we can also do it within.
What do you mean, another one?
If we can find another FTE within the department.
Ah, okay, I thought another position.
That way it's not, no, that way it's not two new FTEs, it's two existing FTEs.
Exactly.
But I would want to hire some workers to, I would want to hire some workers to support our cafeteria ladies instead of supervisors. I mean, we have supervisors out there, there can be more out there onsite and support our cafeteria ladies that need extra help. That's a good point. Maybe we need to look at that before we add more layers of supervi, of supervision. Because Galina didn't have them, and we ran the, she ran the department well. And I'm just, and I know you're saying that, but I just keep on thinking about our cafeteria workers are always asking for help. You know, and I know all of us have, and I know you've been very verbal about that, too, Mr. Cantu.
A male would be nice for cafeteria ladies, because there's a lot of heavy lifting to do, and a male per school would be.
Evaluated before.
We'll look at it and see what position would be that would help and support because it would have to be some kind of, like a rotating person, because we would not be able to have, provide assistance to each cafeteria manager, which we've.
In the past, we have had those conversations. But for two supervisors or two managerial positions is equal to four cafeteria ladies, at least. So maybe the help will go a little further.
So maybe they could be assigned, like, they could still kind of be rotated, right? But they would be like a assistant man, cafeteria manager that goes to certain campuses at certain situations.
Based on enrollment, or, yeah. Good point.
Are there any other questions on staffing allocations? Those were the only changes that we wanted to indicate.
The only one, and I know we don't need, we can't add positions, but I have some suggestions to, for Dr. Science later, but on the elementary, I do think that we need the elementary Social Studies Coordinator. The test is going to change, we need to be ready.
I agree.
It's going to be more reading, the kids are behind, we need an elementary, we voiced this before.
I agree.
And I think it needs to be added, even if we have to do away with something else. I do, I know you mentioned the reading teachers, but we do need reading teachers in the early eight, and. I agree, SP, I was a reading teacher. I thought reading, first through fifth. But what I'm saying is we want to close the learning curve and the gap. We need our reading teachers in the elementary levels, for sure. That's a strong foundation. I mean, they told us, they used them as regular teachers, because we're going to be in a bind. I know, I know. But they need to be there. I agree with you, don't get me wrong. It's just a reading teacher, a regular class without a teacher. What are you going to do? And really, your principal's still going to pull out that reading teacher to utilize them where they're needed. But they're also going to be real strategic about small groups to intervene for those students that are struggling. When all the classes are covered.
Thank you. Any other questions for, regarding staffing allocations? If not, then we can go ahead and move over to tab number three. I'm sorry, tab number four. And tab four are stipends that we will be proposing for the upcoming school year. The majority of these stipends are the same that we had this previous school year. There are just a few changes that we will be noting. If you go to page six of section four, the pages are at the bottom, page six. You will see that the Network Administrator Specialist stipend will no longer be paid. Those duties will be absorbed by another individual. The, in yellow, a little lower there, you see the High School Administrator overseeing dual courses. We no longer pay a stipend. We have an administrator that oversees these courses in the evenings, and they get paid an hourly rate instead of a stipend. And then the Sports and Learning Complex stipend will be rolled into this individual's salary for the upcoming school year.
And that was the TASB recommendation.
Yes, you are correct, Dr. Science.
Instead of paying the yearly stipend.
That probably will have to be brought to the board, right? Because it's an addition, it's a change in salary.
Yes, we will be bringing it. Yes, ma'am, we will be bringing it to the board for approval. On the following page, page seven. TASB did recommend that we place our athletic coordinators at the campus level on Administrative Educator Pay Grade 5. Previously, we just had pay grade, and we did not have a pay grade 2, I'm sorry, we just had salary, we did not have a pay grade 2 reference 2. And so now these individuals are going to be found under Administrative Educational Pay Grade 5.
That doesn't mean they're going to get an administrative contract.
No, it's not, it doesn't mean that they get a raise, it's just, it's just going to give us.
No, I'm not worried about the raise.
Oh.
They'll get their reg.
They still remain with a regular teacher contract, that's just going to be the pay range that we find a salary for those individuals. And if you move over to page nine. Instead of a district diving coach, we are going to be doing away with that stipend, and each swimming coach will be getting a assistant coach at each of the comprehensive high schools.
From the current staffing?
From the current staffing, yes. No, ma'am, from the current staffing that they have at the high schools, they're going to have an assistant coach now for swimming. That is not something that we had previously. If you move over to page 11. On page 11, we did get a request from Fine Arts to remove the stipend for the Assistant Band Director specific for UIL, so we're going to be honoring that request and making that change. And they did request that we give our art teachers a stipend of $1,375. We are one of the few districts who are not issuing stipends for our art, for our art teachers. They do go to various competitions throughout the school year, so they will now be receiving a stipend both at the high school level and at the middle school level, and the middle school level you will find on page 12.
How did you arrive at 1,375 instead of 1,500 or 1,200 or?
That was the number given us, given to us by Mr. Azame. He researched what other districts are issuing out within our area, and that was the number that was recommended, so we went ahead and approved that recommendation.
Good enough, thank you.
If you move over to page 17.
Just curious, just curious.
Page 17 of that same section. We will be recommending a, an additional stipend to our TV station specialist. These are all individuals who perform extra duties during football season because they are televising our football games every Friday night. And this individual is also there with us on Friday nights, so we are going to be adding that stipend.
And other events also. I know we usually refer to the football game, but it's all other evening events.
Yes, you are correct, Dr. Science. If you move over to the next page, page 18. In speaking to the comprehensive high school principals, they are all in agreement that we do not have. we do not have to continue with these two stipends, the newspaper and masterminds.
Did Tim Smith do away with masterminds?
I honestly have not seen masterminds on TV lately, so.
I haven't seen that.
He's retiring, too.
Is he?
No.
Oscars.
And then the last change on page 21. We no longer have a designated disinfection team. So that stipend will no longer continue for the upcoming school year. Are there any questions or recommendations regarding stipends?
I have a question, Amaz, because I'm seeing the operations department. Why do the groundskeeper supervisors get a $5,500 stipend?
What page is that, Alex?
21.
Mr. Villarreal.
It's one person.
Is your mic on? He's asking you to turn the mic on.
The groundskeeper supervisor is one person, and there was extra added duties for, like when we had our Fiesta de Niños, we had UIL events. Any extra duties was for this one supervisor. And I believe this was done about two years ago. I don't have all the details with me, but I can get all the details as to why. But it is extra duties and assignments.
We'll review that one, though. Mr. Cantú.
Any other questions? If not, we can go ahead and go over to section five. This is the Administrative Guidelines Employee Compensation Plan. This is something that has to come to the board and get approved every year. This just allows, this gives a district's guidelines as to how we are going to be providing job descriptions, how we reclassify jobs, how we calculate different salary schedules and so forth. So again, these are the guidelines that we use and that we follow. There are no changes from the previous year, but it is something that we wanted to bring to the board for you to review.
There are no changes, you said?
There are no changes, yes, ma'am. And then tab six. Is our pay maintenance draft. This is the pay study done by TASB. This is tab number six.
This is a whole other work session. It's very important.
Do you want us to put that on the budget work session number six?
I don't know, but I think, I don't think this is something for us to, we pay money to have the study done, and they give us recommendations. And for us to fly through it, I don't think that's, that's my opinion. It's wonderful that you want to cover a lot, but.
Can we go to tab seven, or do we need to do six and then seven?
We can go to tab seven. These are the proposed salary increases. I know at the previous work session, the recommendation that we brought to the board was to not give raises to our staff, unfortunately, because of the deficit that we are currently operating under. We do honor and we do value all of our employees, but at the end of the day, we are operating in a $35 million deficit. We do want to make sure that we reward our staff by making sure to give them a retention stipend for the upcoming school year. So every employee this year will earn $2,500. Next year, we'll receive that stipend. It will be paid out in two payments, one of $1,250 in August and a second one in December. However, there was a request for us to review the raises and bring something to you. So if you see here on the first page of tab seven, we had initially made a recommendation of new teacher salaries beginning at $54,000, and there was a request to put teachers at $55,000. So you can see here how our first-year teachers with no experience will earn $55,000, and then we will make adjustments accordingly to the years of experience.
Thank you.
Any questions? We do present to the board two different possible pay increases. The first one is to keep our teacher's salary at $55,000, which equates to about a 2.5% increase of where we are right now, and give everyone else an additional 1.5%. We would honor the recommendations that TASB has given us to make sure that we keep all of our jobs at the appropriate job market value. In addition to that, add a 1.5% increase to the midpoint. In doing so, we would add an additional cost of $5.1 million.
That was not included in the 35 million.
That is not included in the 35 million. You are correct.
Ms. Ayala, back the previous page where the model is to begin teachers at $55,000, what was the total cost of that? I'm sorry.
The total cost to move teachers to $55,000, you'll find it on the next page, Dr. Science?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, it's there at the top. It would be an additional cost of $2.8 million.
Okay.
And you can see there for every different job type, the increase that we would incur.
So if we were just going to do the new teachers and adjusting others at the 55 starting, it would be 2.8?
You are correct. Yes, ma'am.
It is every year.
This is a reoccurring cost. Yes, you are correct.
I still feel we need to consider classified and auxiliary. Their paycheck does not compare to an administrator, even to a teacher, in cost of living and with everything that's taking place. And in short, we may even go into a recession next year. And so we really need to look at this very closely.
I'm trying to figure out here, Ms. Ayala, if we were to do the 1.5 for auxiliary, which is the total cost of that? Is it the $800,000?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, it's right there if we were to do that. It's on, well, it doesn't have a page, but it's.
Model one.
Yes, it's 800. And you can see for each group, like for, let's say, instructional support, the 1.5 would be 240,000. It's right above.
Well, maybe we can do other little things so that we can get everybody a raise. But we need to do other little things. I mean, big things.
We need to do big things to give a little raise. We have to cut big expenses to give a small raise and still be okay. And not, I mean, I shouldn't say that. We're not okay.
We're still going to be.
But we're not, like, we can't.
I'm just saying, if we don't, I'm just going to put it on the table. If we don't give a cafeteria lady or a cafeteria man a little bit of a raise, and then what we're looking at is to propose to give a $20 to health insurance, we're little.
Yes.
We hear you, SB. We hear you.
It's a hard decision to make.
Yet, yet, it'll be easier, you know? It'll be easier for administration to pay $20 than a cafeteria lady to pay $20.
We hear you. We understand.
So can we be strategic about helping? I mean, we want to help all our employees. I want to help all of y'all. But I also acknowledge that there are some individuals that don't get as much as others.
I say we look at other things, and we make big decisions, and we help everybody. We all care for all our employees.
I just want to clarify or communicate and correct me, Ms. Ayala, but in talking about starting salary for teachers at 55, that cost of 2.8 also includes a 2.5 increase for all teachers.
This is for teachers, librarians, and for our registered nurses.
So that 2.8 is including all teachers, librarians, nurses?
Yes, ma'am.
In the 2.8.
Any questions?
No, just ask the, I don't know, I don't want to dictate about having an extra work session. I don't know if you want to go through the, I just felt that it's a lot. Yeah.
I think that the important part to share with you all was these costs on the 55 starting salary, this information on tab seven. The other part is information that you need to know, you know, and where we stand in comparison to other districts. And we can hold off on that to budget work session number six, if that's okay with everyone.
I think if we go through that one in detail, we're able to come out with a better understanding of where we're at and how much, if we can, give a raise, we will be able to base it from there, depending on comparing to other districts. And I think that number seven would be a perfect, just for another session, so we can go over it in detail.
We might, we might need to, if you need to, if you want information that's on tab six before we make a decision on this, we might need to schedule a budget work session before we had the budget work session number six scheduled. Because budget work session number six was going to be the first week in June, and we might need one maybe a week before.
We could do it next week. We could do it next Monday. We have a facilities committee meeting, so maybe afterwards.
After the facilities committee, we can schedule a budget work session, number six, mainly to do this and whatever else might come up, Mr. Trevino, as far as the budget.
We can bring our binder stack.
Maybe by then we can have more, like, more, well, the departments won't be able to balance until they know what the salary cost is going to be also.
And just to give you an idea of what you can find in this pay draft, it just, like you said, Mr. Cantú, it tells you where we are compared to the job market.
Which is important information.
Yeah, of course.
And it breaks it down by different area. It gives you the breakdown by administrative education, like principals and so forth, administrative management, administrative support, which is our clerical staff, instructional support, which is our instructional assistants, and all of our auxiliary.
How much does it cost to give everybody a raise?
At 1.5%, $5.1 million.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions, that concludes my presentation, Dr. Science.
Thank you, Ms. Ayala.
If it's okay with the trustees, then we can schedule another work session for tab number six for Monday, and Dr. Science will give us the time. And then... Are there any other questions or comments from any? So that the staff doesn't have to redo the binder, just leave the binder here with Irma, or bring it back on Monday so that we don't have to make more copies? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Cantú has motioned to adjourn. Mrs. Hernandez has seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned at 7:57.